All right, welcome everyone. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. 1.1, called to order 1.2 Pledge of Allegiance. And I will go ahead and call Aiden if he could just move up to the mic there and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So actually, right, that one, yeah. Sorry, I guess I should give you a heads up. That's to get you warmed up.
Okay, can everyone hear me? Right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, thank you so much. All right, 1.3 approval of the agenda.
Move.
Second, Ms. Medina. All right, move by Mr. Tillman and second by Ms. Alexander. Did she second? And I will go ahead and call our student board members. And all you have to do is just turn on your mic and say aye. Carlos, Ms. Barrios.
Aye.
Ms. Brisa Hernandez. Evarian Jones.
Aye.
Awesome. And I did mean to mention at the beginning that Dr. Wyatt had a last minute incident, so he's going to, if we're able to bring him online, we're gonna do that. If not, we will miss him and see him next board meeting. But I did want to mention that. All right, motion carries, 2.0 Special Presentations, 2.1 San Bernardino City Community College District Report. And I'll go ahead and invite. Yep, awesome.
Hello, hello, wonderful people. Board Superintendent Ariano, it's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. My name is Carlos Aguilera. I'm a proud trustee of the San Bernardino Community College District. On behalf of our Board of Trustees, thank you for your longtime partnership. Our district represents Crafton Hills College, San Bernardino Valley College. We're honored to serve many of the graduates from San Bernardino Unified. Your students come to us eager and determined, full of promise, and we're there to welcome them and really guide them in life and for things after college. I'm accompanied here today by our Chancellor Diana Rodriguez. She is an incredible leader, not just in our district, but in the community. She helps our students and is really someone that moves mountains for our community. Before we dive in though, tonight, we're gonna get into what our district does, share some updates with you, how we're working to expand opportunities for students and families. But first, we'd like to share with you a video to highlight a lot of what we've done and who we are.
Here in the largest county in the United States, big dreams find a home. S, B, C, C, D. What do these letters spell? Opportunity. We're home to Crafton Hills College, San Bernardino Valley College, and our very own PBS and NPR public media station, KBCR. This is where our community learns something new every day. Affordable tuition, uncompromised quality, over 20,000 bright students. Every year, 2,000 of them graduate to do big things. We're more than higher education. We're an economic engine. In total, we boost our local economy by $720 million every year, building things, supporting local jobs, and helping businesses grow. We also team up with our local schools so young students get a taste of college early on. Our students learn by doing. They clock in over 40,000 hours of community service a year, helping make our neighborhoods even better. And for anyone looking for new career skills or a second chance, our Economic Development and Corporate Training Center is here, welcoming everyone and ready to lend a hand. To every neighbor, every taxpayer, know that every dollar, every effort, is an investment in our shared future. At SBCCD, every day is about creating opportunities right here at home.
And I'll pass it on to Chancellor Rodriguez. She's here in the flesh, not just in the video.
Thank you, Trustee Aguilera.
Welcome, Dr. Rodriguez. I'm gonna go ahead and just, Mr. Tillman wants to make a comment before you get started.
I just wanted to say, before you even do your presentation, that I had the opportunity of rolling a couple of students at Valley College this year, so I had to interact with your admissions and your financial aid and your welcoming center, and they did a wonderful job. There was a young lady named Jen in the welcoming center. She was wonderful. She's a student, I think she just graduated, but she's working there. She really helped the young people in terms of selecting classes and just telling them some of the nuances of who to take, who not to take, and working with their schedule. The stuff that means a lot, right? And what documents they needed. So I just want to tell you, it was a pleasure going there and experiencing the environment you have to help our young people be successful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I love hearing that. And I jotted down the name. We're gonna pass on your thanks to them and congratulate them for doing a fantastic job. And when you said who not to take, you were just matching up personalities, right? So, got it. Thank you all for having us here today. Truly appreciate it. And thank you, Trustee Aguilera, for joining me. Trustee Aguilera is one of our newest board members, and it's exciting, totally engaged, and super supportive of not only what we're doing at the San Bernardino Community College District, but of the entire educational system. So we are truly fortunate to have him as part of our board, so super happy about that. Our other board members, I think you know most of them. They could not be here today, but I think it is important to highlight them and to recognize them for all of the work that they do. And also, our two presidents, Dr. Kevin Haran at Crafton Hills College, and of course, your president at San Bernardino Valley College. One of our newest to the administrative team is Dr. Gilbert Contreras. Who do we serve? On our slide there, it says that we serve 28,000 students. We just ran some numbers recently, and we are super excited to say that we have just bumped over 30,000 students that we serve across the district. We service over 22 cities and communities, and you can see the map there of all of the different areas in which we serve. Seven K-12 districts, feeder schools into our system, reaching over 4 million students across the area. Four million, we say 4 million students, I say 4 million students, right? Because if we're gonna talk a little bit about this, our KBCR television radio has a reach of about 4 million within our area, and I like to think that all of them are potentially our students. One of the things that we like to highlight, especially to parents, is the affordability of going to a community college. Your first couple of years in higher education, we are committed to keeping the cost of education low, keeping the cost of our books that we offer low within our district. And if you take a look at the chart here, I think that gives a nice visual. To come to us, to a community college, the cost would be about $1,250 per year.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna just interrupt. I think we're having a little bit of a hard time. If you can speak a little bit more into the mic, that would be great.
I will, let's see. All right. This is why I have to travel with people. They take care of me. As you can see, that, you know, the cost itself, for the community colleges, it's about $1,250 per year to attend. And you match that against the CSUs and the UCs, we're looking at about 14,000 per year, and it can go up to upwards of about 45,000 if you take into consideration a private, poor profit institution. So I think you'll agree that coming to a community college, just starting your first couple of years of education, truly is a value. So, also, we're growing in more than just local training, right? We're offering more than just that. We're growing and offering things. In the next video, I wanna show two buildings, two areas that I am super excited about, that really highlights where we wanna take education in the future. So let's, let's take a look at that video.
In 2018, you made a smart investment in the future of the San Bernardino Community College District to upgrade classrooms, labs, and career training facilities with Measure CC. Here's a quick look at the return on that investment. Over the last five years, we didn't just start building new facilities. We started raising the bar for local education with spaces that will strengthen our community, like the Future Workforce Training Building at San Bernardino Valley College and the Public Safety Training Center at Crafton Hills College. And we're just getting started. It's about building a cleaner, greener future, with solar power lighting our classrooms, energy-efficient buildings, and electric vehicle stations helping us all breathe easier. This isn't just about new buildings, it's about lifting our whole community. More than 20,000 local students, veterans, and neighbors are getting hands-on training and the skills they need for good-paying careers. And that's good for all of us. We're creating local job opportunities for our neighbors. More than half the people building these projects are from right here in our community. $8 million in wages has stayed local, and $163 million is supporting the local businesses that keep us strong. Great colleges make great communities, and thanks to Measure CC, we've made smart investments in the infrastructure and quality of education at Crafton Hills College and San Bernardino Valley College. Along the way, we've saved taxpayers over $64 million and laid the foundation for something we can all take pride in. But this is just the beginning. At the San Bernardino Community College District, your tax dollars are working for a stronger
I want to thank you all that we're able to come out to our grand opening of our new tech building, and I want to also invite you to our newest facility that's gonna be opening up at Crafton Hills College, our Performing Arts Center, and that's gonna be Friday, September 19th. So we will be sure that that, that you all get the invitations if you haven't already, and we're hoping that you can join us there. One of the programs that we're super proud of, and we are totally proud to be partnering with the San Bernardino City Unified School District, is our dual enrollment program. Across the district, currently, we have over 4,000 students participating in our dual enrollment, and over 1,600 of them are your students from here, from the San Bernardino Unified School District. And we are, we are committed to that program. We're also committed to having more of your students participate in our programs. One of our goals, and it is, it is aspirational, but, you know, if you, if you don't put it out there, it won't happen, right? Our goal is to hopefully have every 10th, 11th, and 12th grader enroll in at least one dual enrollment class with us each semester. That is our goal. Because we hear often, and I'm sure you hear it as well, students saying, "I can't do college. College is for somebody else." We would love to be able to tell them, "You just did it. You just did college, and you were successful at doing college." So you can get an idea of the number of students and where the students are coming from. The next slide here shows kind of a heat map, if you will. All of the blue dots on there show where our students are coming from that are enrolled in our dual enrollment program. And we look forward to coming back next year and just seeing a whole sea of blue up there, okay? When we talk about success, the students that are participating in these programs, they're committed. Like, they're committed, and they are doing well. You can see from the, from the graph up here, the success rates, 88%, 94% in U.S. history. President say. Why U.S. history? I don't know why not, right? So, but they are doing well in this transferable course, transferable to both the CSU and the UC. Even the students that are participating in statistics, probability and statistics, which is tough, right? They're having great success in the programs. And you can see the number of students that are participating in at least those four areas here. So we congratulate those students. We try to make them feel special and to incorporate them into the college community, into college atmosphere, because they are one of us. So we're excited about that. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit, lastly, about KBCR, and I might add Emmy Award-winning KBCR. We recently won two Emmy Awards for our programming. We're super excited about that. And as I stated earlier, we serve over 4 million-plus listeners and viewers across the area, so we have a very, a very, very wide reach. We also is the, we also host FNX, First Nations, First Nations Experience Program. It is the only station in the nation that is strictly for indigenous folks and their programming. So we're excited to have that in our community here. We're also excited to have you all come visit us at the station. We'd be excited to have all of you on the air, yeah. So if there's anything that you would like to promote, anything you'd like to talk about, we would love to have you at KBCR for an interview. In fact, we welcome, we welcome you there to do that. So, that, I'm sure I'm about at a time, and, and I seen your agenda, you all have a lot to do tonight. So I just want to thank you for allowing us to come in and share a little bit about what we're doing, and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation. I'm gonna go ahead and, Mr. Tillman?
Thank you very much. You know, I get excited about Valley College because I went there and graduated back in 1983, and, I mean, I give it credit for my entire career I had in technology. So, I just, I know the value of your institution. But I wanted to thank the superintendent too. We had a welcome-back extravaganza at your site. It was amazing. It was full of people, and I think it's wonderful that we partnered with you to give an introduction to parents and students. Just walking on campus and familiarizing them with that campus, that allowed, allowed them to go back, because they know I can always go to Valley College, I've been there before. So I hope we keep doing partnerships like that. That was great. And then also, we have our own student, Brisa Hernandez Garcia. I just talked to her, she's just getting sworn in at the next item, but she told me she's getting three AA degrees when she graduates. And she says she hopes to go to Stanford. So hopefully, she'll say a few words about her experience in the program at Middle College and San Bernardino Valley College. So I just want to make sure that we keep working together, because it's so successful, and we can help as many students as possible. But I do want to touch on one financial aspect, and I might be wrong on this, but it was a big deal for me when I was registering the students. You don't have to pay immediately. Is that right?
To go to school? Yes and no, how's that for an answer, right? If there are extenuating circumstances, we can work out payment, different payment opportunities, we can introduce to different financial aid opportunities, and so on.
So when I, the students I enrolled, they didn't have to pay, right? They, they had their financial aid, and they probably, the money would probably come out of their stipend from their Pell Grant.
That's correct.
But they told them they had until the beginning of the next semester to make the payment in order to go to school that next semester, which is a big deal. When I went there, you had to pay that day or you didn't attend classes. So, people out of, I just want people to understand that you can walk into Valley College, register for classes, and start school, even if you don't have the money that day, as long as you've done your FAFSA and...
And we can, and we can assist with that as well, if they haven't, if they don't have that completed.
So, so really, the financial cost should not be a barrier. And I just want the public to know that.
Not at all.
Thank you.
And thank you for your leadership in getting those students there. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Ms. Abalas Grande?
Well, I just want to thank you, Diana. You know, both San Bernardino Valley College and Crafton Hills are my, were my colleges, and I'm very, very familiar with them. They changed my life. And I was there, President's Roundtable, February 14th, 1995, as a student leader from Crafton Hills. I was a president then. But I wanted to ask you something. Now, how is the childcare on campus? Is it still doing well? Is it, is it there at both campuses?
Yes, thriving at both campuses. Thriving, absolutely. Thank you for asking. It's one of the programs that we truly value.
Yes.
Both for our general community and for our, our moms and dads that are in the classroom so they can have their students there. Just, you know, I, I would say it's one of our, our signature programs. I think we do it very well, and it's a much-needed program.
Now, how's your student body, your, your organization there? How are they doing in those two colleges? President, vice president?
Of...
Of the students?
Of the students? You know, they are doing fantastic.
Okay.
More and more student clubs arising, more and more students wanting to come with us as we go to advocate for more resources in Sacramento and DC, which tells me that the students are more engaged, which, you know, I get thrilled about.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Abalas Grande. And I just wanted to ask Ms. Hernandez Garcia, did you want to comment?
Yes, hello, my name is Brisa Hernandez Garcia. I'm one of the dual enrollment students at Middle College, so I'm very familiar with the San Bernardino Valley College campus, particularly with their library, also their new facilities, their new building, the newest one. It's one of my favorite places to study. My friends and I go there all the time. It's quiet, it has air conditioning, which is amazing, especially in the summer. And overall, the counselors, we also have counselors on the college side that help us with enrolling in our classes, and the campus is very supportive. We're also allowed to use their facilities, whether that be like the therapy that they have on campus. All of that is open to us as dual enrollment students. And overall, it's just a very supportive environment, and I also grew up right next to it. And I attended, I think, they asked about the Child Development Services. I actually attended the preschool there at San Bernardino Valley College, and so did my nephew a couple of years ago. And my sister also works on campus, so I'm very familiar with San Bernardino Valley College, and it is a very, very wonderful community.
Thank you for that. You don't know how much I appreciate that, and we're making note, because you're gonna be one of our, one of the folks we want to interview on KBCR. So, and I'm glad you're hanging out in the building, in the new building. One of the things that was important to me, and I got a little eye roll on this, but was that I wanted lots of sticky space. That was my technical term, sticky space, where students can stick around, hang out, do their work, you know, engage with each other, and so on. And thankful to our facilities person, people, that actually put in ample sticky space for our students. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And I don't want to leave Mr. Barrios or Mr. Jones, if you guys want to comment. I know you have a little light down there, but I also don't want to put you on the spot, so if you want to comment, you can go ahead and... Awesome. So I will, I will make a couple comments myself as well. I also get really, really excited when it comes to Valley College, because I also attended there, graduated back in 2014, transferred to UCR. As a matter of fact, so I'm the first in my family to graduate from college. I'm talking about extended family, uncles, aunts, cousins, so it was a huge, huge, you know, deal, and it still is. I'll get a little teary-eyed, but, actually, also, Valley College was the first college campus that I ever set foot on. So, it's quite significant for, for those that, you know, don't know a little bit about my, my background, my history, but I'm really excited. If we're talking about dual enrollment, I do want to mention Pharmacy Tech. There's a gentleman over there, Mr. Omar Castro, since you're taking names down. Wonderful, wonderful program. I'm actually, I've been at their last two graduation events, because we've had students that have graduated from their program, and my stepson's gonna be joining this upcoming year as well. He goes to Cone. So, you know, we welcome it, we're really, really excited, you know, and we just thank you for coming out and sharing and, you know, whatever we can do to continue to, you know, support and provide, you know, that partnership. That's what we're here for. So, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And we'll also be sure to invite you all to our 100th Year Gala coming up.
Absolutely amazing. Ms. Medina?
First of all, thank you so much for the presentation, and I'm really excited. I really want to find out how we can reach that goal that you are wanting to push, which is the 10th, 11th, 12th graders receiving at least one class, taking one class at Valley College, or the, you know, the community college area. And I would like for our district to, I know we currently have a program set, now how do we make sure that this happens all the way through? So I definitely would support that idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina, and happy to say that your superintendent, Mr. Ariano, has been more than receptive of the idea, meeting with folks and all that. So I'm excited about where it can go. Thank you.
Awesome. And Mr. Ariano?
Thank you. Well, first, I just want to begin by welcoming Trustee Aguilera. Thank you for your words today and welcome, and thank you for the work that you and your colleagues will be doing. Chancellor Rodriguez, thank you for your leadership in all that you do to elevate the Illinois Empire. You are changing trajectories of lives. We, we talk about that all the time, and then you have folks right on this dais whose Valley College has changed the trajectory of their life, so thank you for that. And I want you to know that, you know, we're doing a better job as an organization, really talking about junior college as an option.
Yes.
So, you know, we've been spreading that word internally within the organization, because I know for many years, the talk was just for your college, and so we want to make sure that junior college option is equally important, equally accessible, and as we can see, much more affordable. So thank you for reminding us of that. I just want to tell you, I've had the opportunity to work with both Dr. Contreras and Dr. Kevin Haran, great presidents, great people that you've selected to work and partner with the district. And in response to the board members' request, I'm happy to announce that the wheels are already in motion. I love the aspirational goal that Diana's put together, and so the President Contreras did invite us and two other districts here in Illinois Empire to talk about, how do we attain that goal? So we've made, at this moment, still unofficial, I don't even know, Diana may not know about it yet, but we are trying to formalize a collaborative with San Bernardino Valley College, Rialto, Colton, Radlins, San Bernardino, so that we can meet that aspirational goal. And the last thing I want to say is, we're proud to announce, coming up soon, to the community, that our dual enrollment number of classes passed in San Bernardino City Unified School District this year compared to the previous year has gone up, and a lot of it has to do with the collaboration that we have with you. So, thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for coming out, and thank you as well, your whole team, and we look forward to seeing you guys at the 100th and the opening at the Crafton, Crafton Hills as well.
May I approach the dais to Ms. Garcia?
Sure.
Thank you all for your leadership. We appreciate being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. We're going to go ahead and move on to 2.2 student board members swearing in. And I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Ms. Goodwin.
President Sabios, good evening. My name is Mary Rhone Goodwin, and I serve as the Director of Communications and Community Relations for the district. At this time, I'd like to invite Board President Sabios to come take her spot in front of the dais. Superintendents and executive members and the rest of the board may remain at their seats. Last month, we celebrated the swearing in of our student board members. And this evening, we are going to swear in our last student board member, Cajon High School student Aiden Hurtado, who will be representing Sierra and San Andreas High Schools. Our student board members serve in an advisory role to the Board of Education for one school year. Welcoming these students to the governing board is so vital to incorporating the voices of the more than 44,000 scholars we educate in our schools across San Bernardino and Highland. Please put your hands together and let's welcome Aiden Hurtado. All right, go ahead and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
State your name.
Aiden Hurtado.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And applause. So what we're going to do is ask the board and Aiden to, to remain here, and we'll take a picture with you. So if the board can join them and Superintendent down in the well here. Bring family with you today. Your family is welcome to take a picture with you as well. Actually have in our audience County Board Member Gwen Doughty Rogers, so if she'd like to join us for this photo as well. Come on up.
I was literally hiding, but I'm glad to join you.
Congratulations. This concludes this evening's special presentation. Let's give this exceptional student a round of applause.
All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to 3.0 public comments, 3.1 receive public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on, on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people wishing to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. So first up, we have Mickey Alexander.
Going after all that, that good stuff, going after, you know, the young man getting sworn in and Valley College. I don't even know if I have anything to say today, but I really do. I'm here today to talk about our nutrition program when it's coming, when we're talking about EXL and student athletes. I don't know if any of you guys had or have a student athlete, but did you know that they're at school until probably, you know, six, seven o'clock at night, and they're going to school at like eight, eight thirty, right? And we're just talking about high school right now, okay? So what if I told you that your child didn't eat after 12 o'clock when there was lunch? But they were out there shooting baskets or playing tennis or swimming or playing football all day, cheering up their school, having their school pride, but they didn't eat. Would you guys care? I hope you would, because this is happening in your district right now. Right now, today, as we speak, this is happening across your district, not just one school, not just two schools, across the district. Now, I'm not just going to come here with a problem. Of course, I have solutions. I did send an email, so hopefully some of you guys did read my email prior. And if you didn't, well, I suggest you should, because I did give a layout of what is in there. But I, I'm going to give three suggestions. One, we have to go back and take a look at the program overall. I think what happened is when we went to late start, I think that's where it happened. I think that's where we forgot about it, right? Because when we were at last, before late start happened, I think kids were getting out at like 2:30 or something like that, like 2:30 around that time. Now they're getting out at 3:30. Did we go back and check out the program? Because nine out of 10 sports, they're, our student athletes, they're starting right at 3:30, right at 3:45, across the district, across your district. They're not eating, people. I really need your guys' support. I do want to give, Ms. Rodriguez, Dr. Rodriguez, sorry, Dr. Rodriguez, some props, because she did reach out to me, and she did, we, we do have a meeting scheduled. And I just want to reiterate again, it's not just one school, it's across the district, sir. It's across your district. And I want to give props also to Ms., no relation, to Ms. Alexander for actually giving me a phone call and talking through it. But I really wanted to come here for my parents out there that are looking or listening online or for my parents that are in the crowd right now. If you don't believe me, if you have a student athlete, ask your child. Ask them. I guarantee you, 85% are going to say, you know what? No, I don't eat. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Francine March.
Hi, my name is Francine March, and this is Linda Morgan. I should have put her name on the paper. We are homegrown, born and raised in San Bernardino. We all went, we both went to college in San Bernardino, and we taught in San Bernardino. So we are homegrown people that love our school district. Anyway, I'm here to talk about the Inland Empire Children's Book Project. We have been an organization in the district since 2015. Our leaders are sitting back there, Barry and Bernice Lowenstein. They're the ones who started it. We receive donations from retired teachers, from the libraries, you know, just different people give us books. We take them, we are housed at Curtis Middle School right now. We take them to Curtis, we clean them, we level them. We have people that sit and look on the computer to see what AR levels they are. Or we have people like us, who were teachers for 30-plus years. When you can't find an AR level, ask us. We'll figure it out. And then after we get them all cleaned up, we go out to schools and we give these books away to students. Last year, we went to 31 schools. We go every Wednesday, if we try to anyway. We went to 31 schools. We gave out over 20,000 books last year alone. We also gave out 500 books to Roxanne Williams for her DEI program. And we are looking forward to doing it again this year. Last year, after I was here, I, we did this last year too, I met Kimber Sargent in the back of the room. She said, what can I do? I said, if you could send an email to all your school principals, elementary principals, that would be awesome, because they won't let us in. Because of Kimber, we got into 31 schools last year. I've already been in contact with her, and as she said, as soon as she gets back in her office, she will send out that email again. So we are looking forward to serving the district again, hopefully get into some of the schools that told us no. And we just want to be there. We are also, I've sent invitations. I don't know if it was last year or the year before, but I've sent invitations to all the board members to come and join us at a book giveaway. Mickey Chahusky came one time. But it would be awesome if some of you guys could come and just see what we do and see the looks on these kids' faces when they get a book and they realize that it's theirs to keep and they don't have to bring it back and they don't have to pay for it. It's just wonderful. It's amazing. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much. Up next, we have Tony Plana.
Hello, Board, Superintendent, Cabinet, and everybody else. I'm back in San Bernardino, and I just wanted to give you a little report. I always have an agenda I want to talk about, and then I hear all these things happening before I get up, and I want to talk about that. So I'll start with, I did a program back in LA Unified when I was in, I was in Angelino, now as San Bernardino. And we realized that if you take a kid to a college campus, it doubles their chances of attending college. That's a, that's a major fact. The other thing that was interesting is that we have just hired a graduate of Cajon, who is an, was an IB student, IB graduate, who just won the Emmy at KBCR in documentary filmmaking. And she's going to teach a documentary class through our program at Cajon. I mean, to me, it's incredible. It's like serendipitous. It's crazy. So here I go, I'm, I'm diversing, but Sofia Figueroa, and she's amazing. And one of the reasons I want to come talk to you, especially at the beginning of the year, is to give you kind of an update of what we've just done the year before. Now, I have to say that I come here with mixed feelings, because the only person who attended our performances was Dr. Rodriguez. And the other thing was great. She invited me recently to speak to your student board members. Hello, how are you? We had lunch together. I did all the talking, they did all the eating. But we had a wonderful time. And Aiden, Aiden in particular, we talked about the fact that he wanted to be a lawyer. And I said, well, I realized halfway through college, I thought I was going to be a lawyer, and I realized I didn't want to be a lawyer, I just wanted to play one. Show up for the final argument, ladies and gentlemen of the jury. Felt good. And so, it's so great to see these people, these young students, have these opportunities to co-mingle with you and learn from you. So again, there's a lot of connections here that, that I think I want to talk about. But primarily, I want to talk about the fact that we just had two days of training for returning teachers in our program and new teachers, because we're, we're growing, we're expanding. And what's interesting is that the last thing I said to them is like, I know you love what you do, right? Because you're, you're performers, you've been trained in performance, and we're training you in teaching performance to students. And I know that's, that you do it because you enjoy it and you're, you're, you're using your talents and your, your, your learning to teach. And so to me, that is super important. It's one of the biggest perks for me in hiring local artistic talent to teach your students. I love that possibility and that, that reality that's happening every day. And I told them, I said, remember that you're teaching them a lot more than you think you are. And so I want to inculcate in all of you just a little bit about the benefits that these children are getting from the work that we do with them. It feels, it seems to be like a lot of fun, seems like, you know, they're just goofing around, but there's a lot more going on. Let me just give you a real list here. Improved focus and concentration, enhanced problem-solving skills, increased creativity and critical thinking, positive impact on academic achievement, study after study shows that. Enhanced communication skills, increased confidence and self-esteem, development of empathy and emotional intelligence, teamwork and collaboration, building social skills, improved physical alertness and coordination, increased physical fitness, cultural awareness, discipline, perseverance. And this is the most important, and what I said to them, you bring joy. You bring joyful learning to their school experience. And that is more valuable than the whole list that I just gave you. You got happy people, you got better learners. Yeah. And so before I, I say, I say, this is what we offer. And the main reason I wanted to come is to let you know that you need to attend our performances. Because right now, the only person I like here is Dr. Rodriguez. So let me show you a little clip of our highlights and invite you to please come to our performances. We have auditions for American Musical Academy, August 23rd and 30th at Indian Springs High School. Come and check it out. Find out where your money's going. It's a good place. It's a good place. Here you go, please. Yeah, look, they're learning a lot of musicals. Really good for vocabulary enhancement, I tell you that much. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out. Up next, we have Roberta Figueroa.
Good evening. Karen here is passing out a letter and some budget information. Over the weekend, our staff learned about that there would be a possible proposal for a name change to San Andreas High School. And so I would like to read a letter from our staff regarding the name change. Good evening, President Ceballos, Superintendent Ariano, and members of the board. We, the staff of San Andreas High, are writing with care and concern regarding the proposal to rename our school. San Andreas High School has become a place of hope, growth, and success for so many students over the years. As one of the most recognized alternative high schools in the state and the first to earn Ling Learning Gold Certification, our school has become a model for how non-traditional education can truly transform lives. Visitors from across California and beyond come to see what we do. And they know the name San Andreas. As part of a Stanford University Alternative Collaborative, we have 10 to 15 high schools across California and even across the United States visit us every year. We have built name recognition in the alternative school community. We have built a powerful identity and alumni legacy around that name. As the San Andreas Quakes, we've created a culture that's felt everywhere on campus, from our Unshakables Expectations to our epicenter office, our Quake Rocks Award, and the way we tell students every day, "You rock." This branding isn't just clever, it creates a sense of belonging, pride, and consistency for students who may have struggled to find that elsewhere. We are also thinking about the practical challenges a renaming would bring. Replacing logos, signage, uniforms, documents, digital systems, and communications would come at a considerable cost, estimated at over 150,000, and would require significant staff time across all departments. In addition, being a high school, there is an added burden related to official documents, contract changes, student-led enterprises, WASC, UC Doorways, parchment, dual enrollment, school contracts, FASPA, and Cal Grants, just to name a few, would be affected with a name change. At a time when our students need every available resource, we hope those funds can remain focused on the things that directly support their success: mental health, academic growth, and connection. We want to express our deep admiration for Dr. Margaret Hill. She was an extraordinary leader whose love for students and commitment to education made a lasting difference. We truly understand the desire to honor her memory in a meaningful way. With that in mind, we would be honored to see the newly established Wellness Center on our campus named after Dr. Hill. A space dedicated to health, healing, and well-being of our students. We believe this would be a beautiful and lasting tribute to her life's work. We share your commitment to doing what's best for students. We hope our words reflect the care we feel, both for our school's legacy and for the legacy of someone as beloved as Dr. Hill. Thank you for your time and for all you do to support the young people of San Bernardino and Highland. With respect and gratitude, the staff of San Andreas High School. And there is a letter that goes more in depth in your packet there. And at the back, you'll see, we listed some of the expenses. And I'll be honest with you, these are very superficial because we didn't have time to really come up with everything. But there is some expenses there that we would have to order. Thank you very much. Thank you for listening and taking that into consideration.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Up next, we have SBT A President, Ms. Barbara Pastchek-Cox.
Good evening, President Ceballos, Vice President Abilis Grande, Mr. Ariano, and esteemed members of the Cabinet and Board. My name is Barbara Pastchek-Cox and I am proud to serve as the President for the San Bernardino Teachers Association. And this evening, I am honored to speak on behalf of our 3,000 dedicated members. As we launch into a 25-26 school year, we warmly welcome our new educators and heartily welcome back those returning. We are equally excited to see our bright, eager students back in our classrooms, ready to learn and grow. We hope this year is off to a strong and inspiring start for everyone. I wanna take a moment to recognize and sincerely thank all of our colleagues who support us each and every day. Our gratitude goes to the custodians who ensure our classrooms and our restrooms are clean, safe, and welcoming. And to the HVAC technicians who tirelessly, who work tirelessly to ensure our learning environments remain comfortable, even in temperatures that climb well above 100 degrees. And to all of our maintenance and operation employees, those who repaired, painted, landscaped, moved, built, and prepared every corner of our campuses. Thank you. This whole team effort of hard work has transformed our schools into the jewels of our community. Places where our students and staff alike can return with a sense of pride, purpose, and comfort. Your efforts are often behind the scenes, but they do not go unnoticed. You help recreate, you help create the environment where meaningful learning can take place and for that, we are truly grateful. I also wanna take a moment to thank Mr. Ariano and everyone involved in their swift and thoughtful response to the power outage earlier today. From coordinating school closures to ensuring students arriving by bus were well-cared-for and making sure that our educators were not required to remain in buildings without power, you demonstrated a responsive, student-centered approach and we truly appreciate that. Moments like these reflect the importance of teamwork and clear communication, especially when quick decisions are necessary to support safety and well-being. This year, the district and SBT A are taking a collaborative step forward. Erin Moran, our SBT A Vice President, and I will be visiting every single school site throughout the school year. While it will take us time to reach all of them, we are deeply grateful for the strong partnership that makes this effort possible. With over 120 SBT A site representatives across the district, we are reinforcing the foundation of shared leadership between union and administration at every school. When a strong union is able to genuinely collaborate with a forward-thinking district, as we are committed to doing here, it creates real momentum. Together, we're laying the groundwork for school communities where educators are valued, supported, and empowered to thrive. Thank you for all your continued partnership and commitment to our students, our schools, and to one another. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Up next, we have Carolina Isumi.
Did I pronounce your last name correctly? Buenas tardes, everyone. I'm gonna speak in Spanish because I feel more comfortable in Spanish. So, I'm Ariano Abigail, everyone. Hi. Well, my name is Carolina Isumi. I'm a student parent, oh, I'm sorry. Mi nombre es Carolina Isumi. De momento soy estudiante en UC Berkeley. También me gradué de San Bernardino Valley College el año pasado. Y ahorita me concierne que tengo tres, bueno, tengo cuatro niños en el distrito escolar. Y mi pregunta es que en San Bernardino Valley, en San Bernardino High School, los baños están siendo restringidos. Entonces, el año pasado, mis niñas salieron con infecciones, se venían urinarias. Y esta es mi petición ahora, por qué, por qué desafortunadamente siguen cerrados los baños. Y justo ayer, una de mis niñas me dijo, mamá, otra vez están cerrados los baños. Entonces quiero saber cuál es esa, ese tipo de segregación que se está tomando todavía en estos días con los niños. Porque pues es difícil conseguir un riñón.
You don't have it written down, right?
No, a few things, yes.
No, I'm just saying, because if he doesn't step in and translate, we're gonna lose a lot of it.
Okay, okay. Go ahead.
Chad had it written down, but she's not following the script, so at some point, Chad has to. So, good evening, my name is Carolina Isumi. And I'm a father of a student in UC Berkeley and also I graduated from San Bernardino High School. I have three children with the district, SBCUSD. My question is why it's been restricted to use the restrooms for the children? My girls, they go to San Bernardino High School. Last year, they came with a urinary infection. Unfortunately, I took care of them. But one of my girls came back and they told me that the restrooms were still closed. So my question to you, it's why there exists this segregation with the students? Why is there not being allowed to use the restroom?
Yeah. So now, bueno, creo que se están violando los derechos de los niños.
I believe the rights, the rights of the children are not being respected.
So, ¿hay alguna manera de solucionarlo?
Is there a way to solve this?
Sé que los riñones de los niños son afectados por no ir al baño y hay consecuencias.
I know that the children's kidneys are being affected for not being able to use the restrooms and therefore there are consequences.
Por favor, encuentre otra manera de que los niños no sean afectados físicamente en horarios de clase.
Please find another way so that children are not being affected physically during classroom time.
Mis niñas son buenas alumnas y merecen respeto, al igual que todos los alumnos que asisten a las high school.
My girls are good students and they reserve respect, just like every other student that goes to the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Ariano.
Buenas tardes, Carolina. Gusto de verla de nuevo. Mañana voy a investigar eso primeramente porque no sé por qué los baños están cerrados, pero vamos a buscar la solución. Entonces mañana me comunico con usted después que puedo investigar qué es la situación, okay?
Por favor.
Muchas gracias por avisarnos.
Gracias.
You wanna translate?
So thank you, Carolina. I'll look into this, I'll look into this matter tomorrow and I will contact you.
Gracias, nuevamente. Buenas tardes a todos.
Thank you very much to all.
Thank you so much. Moving on to 5.0, action report from closed session 5, I'm sorry, 4.0. I almost jumped the whole section. Closed session, 4.1, closed session, public comments. Do we have any? No, we do not. All right, so 4.2, we will adjourn to closed session at this time. Thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna go on to 5.0, action report from closed session. 5.1, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources, Resources Appointment. The board will, well, actually, let me see. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee. Tasha Doyzon, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources. No. Sorry, sorry, I jumped the gun. We have to make, we have to make the vote. Can I, can I get a motion? I apologize.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Alexander. Vote, please. Sorry, sorry. I've been playing jokes all meeting tonight. Well, surprise, surprise, motion carries. So, be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee, Tasha Doyzon, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources. Effective date, work year, and salary to be determined. And I know Dr. Funches isn't here, but thank you.
All right. Good evening, President Ceballos, Vice President Abilis Grande, Mr. Ariano, and Cabinet, and to our board members. Pleasure to be in front of you tonight. My name is Robert Morales, I'm the Director of Human Resources Certificated. And it is my pleasure to introduce these individuals behind me. We're gonna start with our first introduction here. So this individual, we already know, Dr. Doyzon, brings over two decades of dedicated service in education, offering a wealth of experience, deep knowledge of San Bernardino City Unified School District, and an unwavering commitment to student success. As the current Assistant Superintendent of Academic Services, in a different place, she exemplifies a well-rounded, results-driven leadership grounded in transparency, collaboration, and a strong community ties. Her focus on building capacity, coaching site leaders, and aligning with the superintendent's vision ensures every student has the opportunity to thrive. With a passion for visibility, inclusion, and empowering others, Dr. Doyzon leads with purpose, professionalism, and heart. So to my friend, this is a welcome home for you. Board and Cabinet, I present to you Dr. Doyzon, our new Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening, Board President Ceballos, esteemed Board members, Superintendent Ariano, Cabinet, and SBCUSD staff, scholars, and families. I stand before you this evening filled with gratitude. I want to begin by sincerely thanking the Board of Education and Superintendent Ariano for entrusting me with the opportunity to serve as Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. It is an incredible honor and one that I hold with deep humility and a strong sense of responsibility. The role carries special meaning for me, not only professionally but personally. I was shaped by this very community. The people, values, and experiences here helped raise me to be the leader that I am today. Stepping into this position is not just a new chapter, it's a return home and a chance to give back to the place that gave so much to me. I also want to acknowledge the incredible leader, Dr. Funches, whom I am so honored to follow. I wanna recognize Dr. Funches for building a strong foundation rooted in purpose, care, systems, and relationships. Leaving an innovative legacy that put our scholars and people first. And I am honored to build upon this in service to our SBCUSD community. It's truly a joy to join such a dedicated and visionary HR team, one that works collaboratively to support and empower those who serve our scholars each day. As the new Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, I'm committed to leading with people at the center, finding, supporting, and retaining the very best talent. And I look forward to working alongside our incredible HR staff, site leaders, and labor partners to ensure our practices reflect the excellence that our scholars deserve. I would be remiss not to acknowledge and thank my family and my close friends for always believing in me and being my cheerleaders. Special shout out to my Un saludo especial a mi esposo y a mis hijos que están en la audiencia. Gracias por su apoyo, su gracia y por ser mi fundamento. De nuevo quiero agradecerles por esta oportunidad. Espero trabajar adelante y ayudar a que nuestro distrito brille.
Muchas gracias, Sr. Tillman.
Quiero decirles felicidades, Sr. John, y sé que tu abuela Lee estará orgullosa de ti. Su abuela era en realidad un guardia de seguridad en San Bernardino High School cuando fui allí. Y era una persona hermosa que preocupaba a los niños, así que debe ser genético. Una historia interesante, cuando estaba atendiendo San Bernardino High School, alguien había puesto un bombón en un armario. Y de alguna manera su abuela descubrió eso y fue a abrir el armario y el bombón brotó en su cara. Y en realidad perdió el hearing debido a ello. En realidad regresó a trabajar después de eso y tuvo el mismo compromiso que hizo antes del incidente. Y esa es la razón por la que no hay armarios en nuestras high schools debido a ese incidente específico. Y después de eso, cuando corrió por el cargo, siempre me daba consejos y estaba muy, muy apoyada en mí. Así que sé que si estuviera aquí esta noche, estaría muy, muy orgullosa de ti. Así que le doy las felicidades y estamos contentos de tener que trabajar con nosotros.
Sí, felicidades. Bienvenidos al Consejo y esperamos tener a ustedes. Bien, 5.2, aprobación de coordinador de especial educación, oración y servicios relacionados. Movido por la señora Alexander y segundo por el Sr. Tillman. Sr. Santos.
Voto.
Motion lleva. El Consejo... Se resuelve, el Consejo de Educación aprobó la apertura del siguiente empleado. Arlene Dos Santos, Coordinadora de especial educación, oración y servicios relacionados. Día de efectivo de trabajo, año y salario determinados. Y... Vaya, Sr. Morales.
Bien, más celebraciones en orden. Entonces, la señora Dos Santos. Es profundamente comprometida con el éxito de nuestros estudiantes, estafas y programas de especial educación. Con extensa experiencia en patología de lenguaje y servicios relacionados, trae una riqueza de experiencia en ambas escuelas públicas y ambas edificaciones médicas. Su entendimiento firsthand de las fuerzas operativas dentro de nuestras selpas y sistemas del distrito le permite efectivamente apoyar tanto a los estudiantes como a la comunidad que sirve. La profunda conocimiento de nuestro equipo actual, habilidades interpersonales fuertes y clara comprensión de nuestra misión compartida lo posiciona únicamente a ella para continuar haciendo contribuciones profesionales significativas a los objetivos de nuestro departamento de especial educación. Así que desde Lead, SOP, a Coordinadora de especial educación, oración y servicios relacionados, unimos a mí en la bienvenida para promoción. La señora Dos Santos, por favor, unímosse. Vamos a subir.
Buenas noches, presidente Ceballos, vicepresidente Abiles Grande, miembros del Consejo, Asistente Ariano y Cabinet. Gracias por la increíble oportunidad que me has dado de ser parte del equipo de gestión de especial educación. Unirme a ellos y al maravilloso trabajo que están haciendo para apoyar a nuestros estudiantes y estafas es un honor. Me gustaría tomar un momento para agradecer a mi familia. Gracias a mi maravilloso esposo, que siempre me ha animado y apoyado, a mi hermosa hija, que ha sido tan apoyada... No debería haber mirado atrás. ... proporcionando abrazos necesarios y relieves cómicos a mis padres, no solo por apoyarme ahora sino durante los años que me han traído aquí. Estoy ante ustedes esta noche, habiendo sido formada por este distrito, por cada administrador y colegial que me han sumido para llevarme aquí hoy. Gracias, Dr. Rubio, Brianna York, Jackie Willis, Jessica Vial, Tommy Archileta, Brittany Zuniga y muchos otros, que me han mostrado diferentes facetas de cómo es la gran liderazgo. Gracias a mis colegiales de patología de lenguaje y oración, los que están allí haciendo las cosas cambiantes de vida con nuestros estudiantes y por el continuo apoyo y actitud colaborativa que me han mostrado. Invito a cada uno de ustedes aquí esta noche, cuando visiten sitios escolares, a entrar en los espacios de la SOP y ver el trabajo que hacen. Como SOP, puedo decirles que hay algunas sensaciones mayores en el mundo que cuando ayudan a dar voz a un niño que no es capaz de hablar por sí mismo. Mientras no tengo el placer de decir que soy de San Bernardino, he aprendido durante los años que todos tenemos más en común con el otro que sabemos. Yo, como muchos de nuestros estudiantes en nuestro distrito, fui criada por padres que no son famosos con la cultura, cultura y sistema escolar que confían en sus hijos también. Los veo, como muchas de las familias de nuestros estudiantes, trabajar duro y hacer sacrificios increíbles por sus hijos. Así que mientras no puedo decir, ¡ay, sí!, que soy de San Bernardino, puedo decir que esta es mi comunidad elegida, la que en la que tengo el increíble privilegio de caminar junto a familias y educadores para ver a sus estudiantes cradle-to-career suceder. Gracias de nuevo.
Wow, bienvenidos a su nueva posición. Felicidades a ambos, estamos muy emocionados por ustedes. 5.3, expulsión de estudiantes. Se resuelve, el Consejo de Educación acepta y adopta la recomendación y hallazgos del panel de audiencia basado en una revisión de los hallazgos y datos de los panos y recomendaciones y órdenes de la expulsión del siguiente estudiante con números de identificación como listos abajo en concordancia con las reglas y normas del Consejo y en conformidad con la Ley de Educación, Ley 48900.
Movido. Segundo.
Movido por el Sr. Tillman, segundo por el Sr. Santos. Voto, por favor. Motion lleva. 5.4, levantamiento, readmisión de expulsión de estudiantes. Se resuelve, el Consejo de Educación autoriza la readmisión de los siguientes estudiantes con números de identificación como indicados abajo a las escuelas del Distrito Unified School de San Bernardino en concordancia con las reglas y normas del Consejo y en conformidad con la Ley de Educación, Ley 48900.
Movido.
Movido por el Sr. Tillman, segundo por el Sr. Santos. Voto, por favor. Motion lleva. 5.5, otra sesión cerrada, acción. Y no creo que no haya ninguna. Bien, 6.0, miembros del Consejo. 6.1, informes y comentarios. Y voy a empezar con el Sr. Barrios.
Buenas tardes, todos. Mi nombre es Carlos Barrios. Soy el representante estudiantil de Cahun High School. Gracias. Me gusta comenzar aluminando algunas cosas buenas que he visto a través de nuestro distrito recientemente. Estoy especialmente orgulloso y muy agradecido por el programa de deportes de Cahun como capitán de la equipo de boxeo. Siempre es bueno ver nuevas caras venir y durante el verano fue realmente bueno ver nuevos freshmanos venir y aprender mucho disciplina y nuevos habilidades de vida valiosas. También estoy muy agradecido por esta experiencia como miembro del Consejo. Recientemente tuvimos nuestra orientación donde conocimos al Asistente. Conocimos al Sr. Plana y muchas personas importantes que trabajan en el distrito y realmente creen en la visión que el distrito tiene. También me gusta destacar ayer, en el primer día de la escuela, aunque no teníamos escuela hoy debido a la apagada de la energía. Pero ayer, en el primer día de la escuela, fue bueno caminar por el campus. Tuve que conocer a muchos de mis profesores y muchos de ellos realmente tenían esa pasión por los estudiantes y realmente compartían la misma visión que muchos de los miembros del distrito comparten con los estudiantes de Cahun y San Bernardino. Esto no es algo que solo en Cahun. He oído muchas buenas cosas de otros estudiantes que van a otras escuelas. Estaba hablando con la representante estudiantil de Royal y ella estaba muy agradecida y ambos estamos muy agradecidos por el personal de la gerencia que ha estado trabajando, ya sabes, año tras año, asegurándose de que nuestro campus permanezca limpio y seguro. También obtuvieron nuevo equipo de fútbol y tuvieron viajes de verano con los seniores a universidades para ayudarlos a invirtirse en sus propios objetivos. Y en San Andres High School, añadieron nuevas clases a sus caminos y tuvieron, recibieron un don de San Manuel Care's Grant para ayudar a fortalecer su red y conexiones con los estudiantes. También ganaron numerosos premios a través del Programa American Healthiest Schools, así que realmente agradecemos a ellos. Pero todo esto para decir, estamos muy agradecidos por el progreso que hemos visto en el distrito y muy agradecidos por el personal, administración, programas deportivos e incluso la comunidad por apoyar a todos nuestros estudiantes. Gracias.
Gracias por ese reporte maravilloso. Siguiente, la señora Hernández García.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Brisa Hernández García. Soy una señora en medio college high school. Y quería comenzar agradeciendo a uno de nuestros estafas en el campus del medio college. Su nombre es el Sr. Olson. No solo es el maestro de matemáticas para sophomores y seniores, sino que también es el asesor para el club de líderes de la clase en el campus. Y la semana pasada cuando los líderes de la clase estaban ayudando con la orientación, salió de su camino para comprar todos nuestros chocolates de chocolate de Costco, lo cual suena un poco tonto, pero siempre ha sido el tipo de maestro que extiende ese tipo de... Te dará algo dulce cuando ayudas o si ve que estás mal o es tu cumpleaños. Ese es el tipo de persona que es. Así que no solo es un fantástico maestro de matemáticas, sino que realmente aprecio que saliera de su camino para hacer eso por nosotros. Y la semana pasada, como decía, el medio college organizó su programa de estudiante bridge, que es su orientación de freshmanos. Es donde los freshmanos simulan pasar por sus horarios y es una oportunidad para ellos para conocer a sus profesores y dónde están sus clases. El programa dura dos días con los líderes de clase de primer grado voluntariando. Así que el primer día pasaron los horarios y bienvenieron a los estudiantes. Y luego el segundo día se voluntizaron a darles el contrato de estudiante así como distribuir sus vestidos PE durante sus terceros y quinto periodos. En Sierra High School, cuando hablé con su representante estudiantil, mencionaron que en la próxima semana tendrán un programa de exhibición, que es el 8 de agosto, y van a lanzar su programa de radiance. También van a bienvener a los miembros del equipo de sunshine, que son mentores de clase a clase, y están campañando por el Día de Prevención de Suicidio. También tienen servicios y apoyo que se bienvenen a todos en la comunidad, incluyendo unidades móviles dentales y médicas, producción de productos cada dos semanas, con la siguiente siendo el 15 de agosto. Sus servicios de lavadora y secador están open para el público por reserva el viernes en su Centro de Rango de Recursos de Olive Branch, así como vestidos disponibles para todos los edades así como gafas. Cuando hablé con la representante de Pacific High School, mencionaron que durante el verano, en colaboración con ETS, que es la búsqueda de talentos educativos, que es un programa pre-college en UCR, los estudiantes de Pacific pudieron quedarse en el campus y aprender sobre esa experiencia de college manteniendo en los dorms. Tuvieron workshops en FAFSA, cómo network, aprender sobre las becas y cómo obtener... Y obtuvieron tips sobre cómo escribir sus aplicaciones. También tuvieron workshops relacionados con STEM, que incluyen hacer una coleta de cohetes, hacer un motor y hacer un cráneo. Y para concluir, quiero hacer otro momento de gratitud a la señora Post y la señora Cunningham, que ayudaron a organizar nuestra orientación de miembros del Consejo la semana pasada, así como el Dr. Rodriguez, el Sr. Plana y el Asistente, que nos sentamos y comimos y respondió a todas nuestras preguntas. Y también me gustaría mencionar que mientras las otras escuelas ya han comenzado, el medio college no comienza su primer día oficial hasta mañana. Y eso es todo. Gracias por su tiempo.
Genial, genial. Gracias. Y luego, último, el Sr. Jones.
Hola, hola, todos. Mi nombre es Avraham Jones. Soy una, soy una señora en San Rogonio High School. Primero me gustaría comenzar mi oración expresando mi gratitud hacia nuestro increíble Asistente. Tomó el tiempo de su día el jueves o el viernes durante nuestra orientación de miembros del Consejo para venir y sentarse con nosotros y hacer preguntas. A pesar de que le pregunté tantas preguntas, respondió todas nuestras preguntas a lo mejor de su capacidad y yo, y yo lo aprecio mucho por hacer eso. No tuvo que hacerlo, pero eligió, eligió hacerlo. También me gustaría tomar el tiempo de mi día a agradecer al Dr. Rodriguez por invitarme durante el verano a lanzar el primer paseo en el juego de béisbol de los 66ers durante la noche de empleo. Durante esta experiencia tuve el tiempo de invitar a mi familia a experimentar un juego de béisbol y también a verme en la pantalla grande. Durante esta experiencia también pude conocer a un joven que, que se acercó a mí después y me pidió jugar con él de rock, papel o scissor. Incluso me preguntó algunas preguntas sobre cómo lo hice y le dije que no estaba seguro exactamente. Solo me invitaron aquí. Y luego también el niño realmente me agradeció por hacerlo porque dijo que se sentía como... Se sentía feliz viendo a alguien hacerlo. Me dijo si podía ayudarlo, pero le dije que no podía ayudarlo. También me gustaría expresar mi gratitud hacia mi directora delatory en San Rogonio High School por darme la oportunidad el año pasado durante mi último año para traer a dos representantes estatales. Tuvimos que traer al senador Achoa Bog, también miembro de la asamblea, James Ramos. Con su aprobación, lo aprecio mucho por hacer eso porque no tenía que aceptarlo. Podría haber rechazado y dicho no, no completamente. También me gustaría tomar el tiempo para mencionar el hecho de que San Rogonio hace su orientación antes de que la escuela empiece, también nos hace tomar nuestras fotos de identidad y obtenemos nuestros documentos de horario durante el verano. Otro miembro del Consejo de miembros de San Bernardino High School pudo tener su orientación de trabajo en cafetería y ella dijo que tuvo una experiencia maravillosa haciéndolo. También obtuve información de un representante de Indian Springs que me han dicho que se estaban dando, haciendo adquisición por Valley College durante el verano. Así que eso fue, eso fue otra cosa maravillosa. Hoy aprendí que Tony Plana tenía audiciones en Indian Springs también y EXL está proporcionado con eso. Exacto, no puedo recordar exactamente, pero escuché de audiciones durante el 23 de agosto y creo que el 30 de agosto para Indian Springs High School. Así que eso es algo que me ha gustado que esté sucediendo. Y me gustaría terminar mi oración diciendo gracias a todos por escuchar lo que tengo que decir.
Presidente, ¿puedo hacerle una pregunta al Sr. Jones?
Por supuesto.
¿Alguien lanzó un strike? Cuando lanzé el primer paseo, lanzé un strike. Él estaba fuera de su bolsillo. ¿Alguien lanzó un strike, Sr. Jones?
No, señor.
Oh, okay.
Estaba ahí con él. Hizo un buen trabajo. Hizo algunos ejercicios prácticos.
There you go. Todos ustedes hicieron un gran trabajo en sus oraciones. Gracias.
Sí, lo hizo. Muchas gracias. Bien, 7.0, discusión del Consejo. 10.1, renominación de San Andres High School. El Consejo discutirá la renominación de San Andres High School. Esta recomendación viene del Comité de Nominación y Comité de Facilidades. Así que la abro para discusión. La señora Rosales Medina.
Soy parte del Comité de Facilidades y sé que esto fue, ya sabes, porque nos llegó como recomendación. Pensamos que fue una gran idea, pero luego lo mencionamos durante una de nuestras reuniones del Consejo y Danny, el Sr. Tillman, nos recordó que no podíamos nombrar... Bueno, no hemos nombrado una escuela de high school, ya sabes, de una persona a una persona. Y entonces, y luego, por supuesto, recibimos la política del Consejo indicando eso también. Así que, ya sabes, entiendo que fue traído de vuelta, pero para mí pensé que la conversación era, "Okay, podemos hacerlo". Y así, y en este caso, después de escuchar, ya sabes, el propio sitio escolar y escuchar cómo esto puede impactar... Y, 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 el Dr. Hill fue una gran persona, pero sé que han habido varias facilidades nombradas después de ella y especialmente esta aquí. Así que sugeriría, aunque soy parte del Comité de Facilidades, ya sabes, sugeriría que no avanzamos en la nomenclación de la escuela de high school después de ella.
Gracias, la señora Alexander.
Presidente, solo para clarificar, no estamos votando, ¿verdad? Solo estamos discutiendo.
No, correcto. Es solo una discusión.
Okay, sí. Creo que cuando la representante de San Andreas, Bertie Figueroa, nos proporcionó un análisis que fue una gran revisión, solo tenía una pregunta, y tal vez Terry puede ayudarnos. Los estimados relacionados con si hubiera cambiado, ¿qué pudimos sumar? ¿Qué costaría si hubiera cambiado?
Buenas noches, la señora Alexander. Es una buena pregunta. Cuando estaba revisando la lista aquí, hay muchas cosas que veo que podrían atravesarse. No necesariamente tendría que ser algo que sucediera inmediatamente, por la noche. Así que muchas cosas aquí podrían simplemente se deshacer de su inventario y cuando compras nuevo inventario, como harías con estos productos... you'd simply replace it with the updated information or the logo. Um, I might have an initial cost. I'm thinking of, of signage out front, hallway, so forth, um, letterheads and all that kind of thing. Maybe in the, I don't know, forty to sixty thousand dollar range, quite possibly. I can definitely clarify that with Facilities and also our Purchasing Director, who could give me really good cost estimates.
Are, are those all your comments? Mr. Santos? No, 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 I'm sorry. Ms. Abilis Grande?
Um, I think, um, our mother Margaret was very frugal. Um, I, I know this. Uh, I was in line with her once at, uh, Trilla Delgado's send-off to run for something. And we were just discussing something and we were looking at the breads in the shape of buses, admiring, and she was saying, how much must that accost? You know, and, uh, and then she said, just out of the blue, she said, you know, Mary Ellen, I could have gotten my doctorate. Because, but I just couldn't see spending that kind of money for something that I know I could do anything I wanted to do, just, just where I am. You know, so that, and then they did make an excellent argument in my view, because my daughter, my youngest daughter graduated from San Andreas. I wouldn't like to see that name changed. I'm proud of it. Thank you.
Mr. Santos?
Clarification on our board policy. Can we name a high school or rename a high school, or can we not? Do we know what that board policy is?
It was emailed to all of us, um, but I, I don't know if Mr. Ariana wants to.
I didn't think I saw that. I just, it didn't specifically state that. That's why I'm asking. Because I know in a previous meeting, we had said that, but in what we were, what we were sent, I didn't see that exact wording. That's what I was asking for clarification.
So I, I would say that whatever's in the policy is what is. So, um, did, did you want me to read it?
So it says, um, it, it, under the second one, of course, maybe we should have the whole thing read, but building and facilities on a school campus shall not be designated, uh, designated by an individual name except by unanimous vote or unanimous approval of the board. So it can be done, but if you have the unanimous, that means all the board members approve. Um, and even if one board member doesn't approve it, still wouldn't move forward.
Ms., was that, Mr. Tillman?
It was a policy in the past, or maybe it was board bylaws. It was something that stated that high schools had to be named, cannot be named after a person. And you know what? I'm so old, it may, it, my memory may go back to when we named Aurora Valley. When we named Aurora Valley, we knew that we couldn't name it after a person. It had to be named some other name other than after a person. But the concern that I have about, uh, renaming a school, and I take it personal. I would not want someone to rename San Bernardino High School another name. And so if I feel that way about San Bernardino High School, how could I not feel that way about other people's alma mater? And so I really think we need to go back and change the policy. If we, we must have changed it since that time, where we cannot name a high school after a person. I think it, it, it just had balled well for us over time. And, uh, I, and, and as much as I, I support Dr. Hill, thinks she was a great woman, did wonderful things, benefited my family personally, so I know the work that she's done. But I wouldn't be in favor of cha- changing the name of a high school to a person. I just, and, and it's personal. Uh, you couldn't explain to me why I'm going to change the name of San Bernardino High School. You, you're not gonna, I don't care who the person is. I don't think it's, it's fair, because too many people have an attachment to it. And I don't think any high school that exists should be belittled in that way in terms of saying, you know, we understand, but the name is going to change. So I don't support changing the name of the high school, uh, any high school after a person.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Ms., Ms. Rosales? Did you want to make a?
I'll, I'll just add really quickly. So then just by, just by seeing that, I know we could still have a discussion, but just by seeing that there wouldn't be a unanimous vote, if we were to have moved this forward, that there wouldn't be unanimous vote. Um, of course, we could definitely hear, um, you know, who else wants to speak on it, but I'm sure that that would, you know, kind of put an end to it.
Thank you. Ms. Abilis Grande?
I make a motion that we vote today. Is there a second?
I don't know.
What?
It's a discussion item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just point of order. I'm just saying.
Thank you. I mean, technically, we can motion for, for anything we want, really.
I, I think if you don't have something agenda, as an action item, because I'll tell you why. If it was an action item and, and the agenda is public, people would take it in a different way. When you say discussion, and you have a list here as board discussion, the, the public has the right to assume that action is not going to be taken.
Makes sense. All right. So, um, any more comments for discussion at this point? Okay, so I guess we will move on. Um, and if I'm hearing correctly, I guess just for my, my sake, I would be able to look for consensus. We're, we're, we're consenting, or let me rephrase it. Do I have your consensus to not bring it back at this point? For action? Because it was something that was, and the reason why I ask that is because it's something that was kind of sitting on dock, if you will. And I believe, um, you know, folks in the community wanted to, at least for the board, to have a discussion, right? So as the discussion has gone, um, if it comes back up again, then what, it's not going to be pending anymore. We're consenting now that we're moving on. All right. Eight point O action items, eight point one personal report, um, eight point one personal report number three dated August fifth, twenty twenty-five, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations. Okay, as presented, um.
Promoted.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Tillman, uh, moved. Mrs. Alexander, second. Vote, please. Motion carries. Nine point O consent items, nine point one approval of consent list. Is there any to be pulled? Okay, can I get a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Mr. Santos. And no items to be pulled. Vote, please. Uh, Mr. Barrios?
Hi.
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez Garcia?
Hi.
Mr. Jones?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion carries. Eleven point O reports and comments, eleven point one board members. And I will go ahead and start to, well, actually, do I have any volunteers?
President Subias, you missed, um, section ten point one.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Ten point O report, uh, comments by union organizations, ten point one San Bernardino Teachers Association.
Report?
Ten point two California School Employee Association.
No report.
Ten point three Communication Workers of America.
No report.
And ten point four San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
And no report.
Thank you. See, I knew that. That's. Um, eleven point O reports and comments, eleven point one board members. Do I have any volunteers? Mr. Tillman?
Start, I just want to, uh, thank the superintendent, uh, and all district staff for a great start to a new year. You know, the, uh, the board and superintendent get tested when things come up that aren't expected, and today was one of those things. Um, I woke up at five in the morning when my CPAP stopped working and realized the power was out and, uh, started getting the notices from, uh, Southern California Edison. Uh, I, you know, I called the superintendent at five in the morning and said, what's going on? Where are we at with this? Uh, but, but so that initially the Edison, superintendent told me that Edison was supposed to have the power on by six thirty. And then I got a text saying, um, three thirty. So to, just so that everyone understands, you know, we all agree, I think, that kids are better off in school. But it became obvious if the potential was not to have power until three thirty, and we had a heater virus, it would be a hundred degrees. You can't have students at school in buildings that aren't air-conditioned, um, you know, at, at a hundred degree weather. So it became obvious that for those sites, I don't think that they could have, um, attended school. So I do want to apologize to the parents and students for the inconvenience. But at times, the board president and superintendent and board had to make the tough calls. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Do I have anybody else that wants to go next? Ms. Medina?
We just, welcome back to all our students, our staff, our teachers, everyone that's back to school, um, to another successful year. Really look forward to, um, many gains and many opportunities that our families and students and staff and district and everyone's going to experience this year.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Sure. I would like to welcome back everybody, um, the students, their families, the teachers, all the staff. I hope you had a enjoyable summer while it was probably, what, a total of six weeks? Right? Um, hope you all came back energized. I know that just from the pictures, there was a lot of smiles and happy faces. I happened to be at Highland Pacific, but just wanted to say thank you to all the administrators that made it a great experience for the students for their first day. And good luck to the student, the high school students, those that haven't started. So it's Middle College. Is that the only one that hasn't started yet? So good luck tomorrow. Um, I had a question. So thank you Superintendent Ariana for the response. I actually was getting ready for work and it became pitch dark, so it was a very scary moment for me. Didn't know what was happening, but just the reaction that we have there in terms of our emergency response is great. I just have a question. If there are parents who have no option, they have to go to work, do we provide any type of like daycare services or alternatives for them that they can look into?
Thank you for the question. We have not. No.
Is that something we can consider? Maybe like just a shortlist, not something that we sponsor, but maybe a list that we can?
Yeah, everything's possible. So let me get a chance to take a look at some opportunities.
Okay. Did, did you want to answer that? Oh, okay. Um, the other item that I wanted to talk about was, um, we had a parent come in to talk about just the after-school sports. And I know, Dr. Rodriguez, you will speak, be speaking to Ms. Alexander about that program. Um, but she brought up a question that kind of sparked my interest too. Since we changed the late start, do we evaluate, um, the program as it relates to, I guess, the, the food and, um, the meals for the students? And do we look at that program, um, at, and once we did the late start? Because that was a question she asked, so I wasn't sure if we did.
Yes, we did. Um, one of the concerns, though, was that, um, athletics, because it was pushed a whole hour later, that if students went to caps first and then went to practice, that they would then go in too long and they would be getting home later. So we will work with the A.D.s and the coaches to make sure, because we have in the past been able to have students go to caps, get their food. Um, usually it's like a study hall or like a academic, academic advisement period of time, and then they go to practice. So we'll be working out those logistics, um, when we meet with Ms. Alexander. We'll be meeting with the county auditor of the EXL program, EXL representatives, and Mrs. Alexander, um, it's, the, the meeting's happening this week.
Thank you. And then lastly, I wanted to compliment you and your team in terms of family engagement and just our partnerships that we have with, um, our, the agencies that we partner with that provide dentistry services and, um, any type of services for the students as it relates to need. My understanding, like the end of last year, one of the questions was, are we seeing a decline in our number of students? And the feedback that I received from you at that time is that we're not, and statistically we're able to say that. But then when I spoke to your team again, I guess we've even tightened up our process where we're, we're trying to make sure we're not missing out in terms of the students that need the services. And also, I believe we changed how we're marketing it as well. Is that correct? And what I'm talking about is for the public. This is for dental services, eye care, um, food. Am I missing something else in terms of partnership?
Um, the glasses, as well as, um, our food distribution, diaper distribution. Um, so we will be putting out, um, banners on those days that we are providing those services at the schools so that the community at large knows what is happening on that campus in regards to those additional services.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you. Thank you. Before I move on, Mr. Tillman, did you have a, something to add?
I wanted to, uh, how many schools, uh, were sixteen schools? I, I would like for us to take a look at those schools. I know we talked about in the past, uh, Mr. Comlick, about providing generators at those sites. But I think those sites are going to always be in the area of being shut down because of the potential fire risk. Just because of their location. And it's obvious that Southern California Edison, their number one priority is not starting fires because it costs them billions of dollars to, uh, mitigate, uh, the cost after the fires occur if they're caused by the Edison power lines. That's not going to go away. That's a new reality. So I, I, I really hope that we will look at bringing in generators that can give us lighting and air conditioning at all those sites. And, and if we don't have the, the, the money to pay upfront, maybe we can look at doing a, uh, paying for it by leasing it, Mr. Comlick. But I think it's important enough that we, of course, we got to get board consensus. But I think on those sites, we should have generators there that, um, when the power goes out, you hit the generator and everybody stays in school. Um, I know when I worked at the county, we, our major IT department had a generator. So I know there's work involved in terms of, um, testing them twice a year, going through those, those, uh, tests and, and then the maintenance part of it. But I think in the end it's worth it, because we know those sites are going to consistently be going down throughout the year because of the fire risk.
Thank you. Ms. Abilis Grande?
I just, I just want to say welcome back to all of the teachers in our wonderful and amazing school district. Uh, I like to say especially the special education teachers, but it's because I'm prejudiced, I was one. Uh, and they do, will always have a warm spot in my heart. But, uh, I love all teachers and I'm subbing now, and so I'm really getting to know that other section. Uh, I just want to say thank you very, very much to the conferences I attended this summer. The, there was a summer management conference, an unforgettable, um, event. I just love it. And if you've missed it, uh, please be sure to go next year. I mean, it's just like, it's better and better. Uh, I won't tell, tell you anything more about my speech there, but, uh, I do want to mention that it, um, the, the AI presentations there was just cutting edge, right on the mark, and, and just, I want to hear more of those. I want to see, I want more people, more of our teachers and educators to, to hear more, to see more about, about that. You know, even if it's just in departments, but we really need to, to catch up already. And the other, um, speaker I was very impressed with, we just, impressive, impressed is not a good word. Inspired, amazed, um, are the special ed, um, uh, event at Arroyo Valley. And Isabella Rainbow. Isabella Rainbow. Ryan's her father? Ryan's your father? I, I just, right, and I can't breathe just thinking about it. I can't say anymore about it, except I hope, I hope we hear more of her. I hope we, I would wish each and every one of us in here could, could have heard her speech. Uh, she was born with cerebral palsy and they told her her, their baby would never talk or walk or speak or any of those things. And there she was doing all of those things. So she's a miracle. And I just want to say thank you for tonight. Looking forward to another great year together, team.
Awesome. Uh, I'll, I'll come back to you. Mr. Santos?
Thank you, Madam President. One, I want to thank the, well, welcome everyone back, students, teachers, administrators, everyone back to our school year. And thank superintendent and his team for today. As someone who has students at Cajon, Chavez, and North Verdumont, all the schools that were affected today, I truly understand it was a hot day. There's no way without air conditioning, you know, it would have been a good place to be. I know it's a tough decision. It's a hard decision to make, but I honestly think it was the best decision to make today. Also, the back, I know it's been a while, but the back-to-school extravagance, I got to go and walk that and for the first time, see Danny without a suit on. But it was a great event, parents. There was a long line, I remember when I got there, but it was a wonderful, wonderful event. And then also for the back-to-school conference, I got to go to the leading math together for the principals. And thank you to the principals that welcomed me to my table. They put me in a wonderful table, we're sure, it would have been great, but I was there by myself for a minute. So I kind of walked around and there was a set of principals who, I can't remember everyone's name, so I don't, I don't name a few of them, but thank you for welcoming me in there. And then sat there for, I think it was three hours till lunch break, but it was a wonderful thing. And thank you to Dr. Amy Coker. I also sat in for about an hour with the third grade north end teachers. I don't know if they knew who I was or nothing. I just kind of sat there and kind of learned a little bit about what we're doing with iReady and iReady Math. So I thought that was a wonderful conference and, as I always say, I'm learning new things. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Alexander.
Just forgot to welcome our new student board members. You guys are awesome. You gave a really good report, each and every one of you, so great job.
Awesome. And then I'll just be brief as well, just welcome to everyone as well, as my colleagues have said. I was really excited to begin this year. I don't know if it's because I went on vacation, I was just feeling refreshed or what have you, but I was gone for almost the entire summer, so I do apologize. I know there was a lot of events that I kept getting reports on that were wonderful. And, you know, there's always next year, so hopefully I get to attend some of those next year. But that's the reason why I wasn't at most of them. I definitely wanted to come to the orientation, but I was ahead of town. But I've heard great things about the orientation. The superintendent let us know that you guys had a lot of questions, great questions, by the way. He shared that you guys are really a great, just a bunch of students, just really eager and, you know, very knowledgeable. And so we're really looking forward to working with you all as well. Please feel comfortable, you know, reaching to any one of us. Yeah, you know, I don't have any cards today, but next time I'll, you know, come with cards and texts, you know, what have you, because we really want to make sure that you guys feel inclusive and, you know, you're taking something out of it. And yeah, so again, welcome to everyone and super, super excited. I know that, I don't know if I can share this or not, but Mr. Ariano, you've shared a little bit about some kind of good preliminary data that's going to be coming and you're, you know, we're going to be learning. I'm really excited for that. I think you said somewhere around October is when we'll know more about some of our metrics and kind of where we ended last school year. So they are pointing in a positive direction from what we're hearing. And so I'm really, really excited about that. So, you know, just again, thank you for all of the work you're doing, you know, whether it's a little bit of improvement or, you know, big improvement. We're moving in a positive direction, so we hope to be able to share that with everybody here shortly. But yeah, so keep it up. We're really excited. We're really rooting for you guys. I hope you, everybody out there feels it. I hope you guys all feel, you know, the positiveness, the support that you do have from leadership, from the board, from the superintendent cabinet. And, you know, let's just kind of keep moving in that direction with that momentum, and we're really excited to have everybody back. So with no further to add, Mr., I'll pass it on to Mr. Ariano.
Thank you, President Cevallos. And first of all, just want to welcome our this year's student board members. Thank you for being here today. I really enjoyed my time with you early in your week. Thank you for making it fun for me. You asked some tough questions, but the one thing that we all have in common is we want what's best for our students every day, right? So thank you for reminding us of our duty, appreciate the positivity, and thank you for being ambassadors on behalf of the superintendent board, letting us know what's going on at schools, but also letting everyone else know that we see them, we hear them, we value them, and we love them. So welcome aboard, guys. Appreciate that. So want to welcome everybody to the new school year. Very excited to start the school year. We're very optimistic at everything that's been happening the last couple of years that we've been working together. I've highlighted again to remind everybody, we have a multi-year vision. It's called SBCUSD Shines 2030. Within that, there are six important pillars that we as a board have listened to the community. The community has told us what is important. And within those six pillars, we have objectives that is our job to work towards between now and 2030. And as was mentioned, we have some preliminary good information that our proficiency in E.L.A., our proficiency in math is going up again, that our graduation rate is going up, that our A through G completion rate is going up for a second year in a row, that the number of students completing dual enrollment courses is going up. So I really appreciate all of the hard work of our principals, our teachers, our support staff. Everybody in the organization is doing their one important duty to keep moving this district towards that fifty-fifty, seventy, ninety-five, which is our initial benchmark is to get to fifty percent proficiency in E.L.A., fifty percent in math, seventy percent A through G proficiency or passing rate, and ninety-five percent graduation rate, and we are well on our way. So welcome to everybody to this school year. And I tell everybody, we have the best teachers, the best principals, the best support staff, the best board, and the best kids and the best in the state of California, hands down. So I'm very proud to say that. So welcome to this school year. Next slide. I want to give a shout out to Melinda, I think her last name is Goggan. She's a program specialist for behavioral support and special education. I had the honor of sitting in her presentation at Cal State San Bernardino earlier in the week, or last week for the teacher prep. And she did a presentation on how to work with kids with A D H D and on the autism spectrum. It was the most amazing two hours, not only as an educator, but as a parent. And I learned so much from her, and I know she won't mind saying this, me saying this because she said as part of her presentation, she was diagnosed with A D H D and continues to take medication for A D H D. So she understands what it is to be a student that has that type of brilliance. And I love that she used the word brilliance, because I always like to say, I don't use the term special education, I say special brilliance, especially being a parent of a child who is an IEP. And so I want to just encourage our educational services department, I'll speak with Mrs. Alpikate when she gets back, and Dr. Rodriguez, I want to encourage, I would love to see Mrs. Goggan present to our parent groups, our parent committees, APAC, D-LAC, because so many of our parents who struggle to work with students that may have brilliant needs but don't have the know-how. This young lady does a great presentation, easy to follow, easy to understand, and hopefully easy for our parents to replicate. So Melinda, thank you, and Sandra and Anna, we'll talk on how we can make that happen moving forward through our parent engagement efforts and through our multilingual departments. So great job, Melinda. Keep doing, keep up on the presentations because it's helping our kids and our teachers shine. Next slide. I just want to give a big thank you. This is a time of year that the human resources department, they've been working all summer to fill all of our teacher vacancies, all of our classified positions. So H.R. and our personnel commission, I just want to say thank you for all your work. Our kids are starting off with teachers in the classroom, with principals in place, psychologists in place, and we haven't forgotten the work that goes unseen behind the scenes. So Mr. Lopez, you know, please be sure to tell your staff that we appreciate them, that we see them and we thank them for what they're doing, to make sure our kids have what they need to be successful. So H.R., Personnel Commission, love you. Thank you for your work. Next slide. We heard today from the chancellor of San Diego Valley College, and she talked a little bit about one of the collaborations that we have. But I just want to personally thank Dr. Contreras, the president of San Diego Valley College, and Dr. Morales from Cal State San Diego. They always allow us to use their space for trainings, for the parent extravaganza, for graduations. And so I just want to publicly thank them for being great partners. They're always there to help us when we need a facility, and they're just good to work with. Both presidents are working with us not only just for events, but also, as you heard, to provide our students the opportunity to get ahead with their education with the dual enrollment courses. So great things are happening in the city of San Bernardino because the school district, the community college, and the university is working together to make our kids better prepared for their future. So I thank both institutions and both presidents on behalf of the board, on behalf of the district. Next slide. And it was mentioned, we had an amazing management conference that had, revolved around the topic of A.I. Want to thank Mary Ellen and Scott for being there and giving their motivational speeches to the management team both mornings. We had Chris Jackson and Dr. Patel from San Diego County Schools that talked about how A.I. fits in public education, not just in the classroom, but also in the operations. They also were kind enough to stay for two days to do additional workshops, so they didn't just do keynote. They actually had workshops where they did presentations of different A.I. tools and how they're applied to not only the classroom, but how they're applied to operations, MNO, transportation. I know Dr. Rodriguez has been doing some work on some H.R. databases that could be helpful. And so these things are, and these conversations are happening. Mary Ellen, you're right, it's easy to fall behind because A.I.'s moving so quickly. So we're actually in the process of having the conversation of looking at how we want to reorganize our organization in terms of having a higher level of expertise for A.I. So soon I'll be coming to the board with a recommendation that we have on how we can continue to support A.I. district-wide, not just in the classroom, but in terms of operations as well. So exciting times. I want to thank our speakers. On the second day, we had Dr. Eric Scheninger, who was more leadership, excitement, rah-rah. He is a former principal in New Jersey School District where he was a turnaround school, very successful principal. So we appreciated hearing his philosophy and his approaches so that our principals could learn, like in coaching situations we were talking about earlier. So communications, Mary Rowan, to your department, thank you for putting this together. It was an amazing two days. DJ Ice Ice was there for two days to set the music and tone. We had walk-up music, right, from Atomic Dog to Shining Star to, I think we even had some cumbias up there. So it was a lot of fun. So thank you for having not only a meaningful event, but a fun event. Next slide. And then I had the honor, you'll see these next two slides, I had the honor to meet and greet the new teachers here at the New Teacher Academy. You see all the new teachers behind me. And if you go to the next slide, then I had all the new certificated staff. You can go, yeah, there you go. So that was my opportunity to say to them, thank you for choosing us, not the other way around. Thank you for choosing us. Thank you for choosing to work with our students and our community. As was said today, not everybody is grown up and went to the schools, but they're choosing to be here, right? And I really appreciate that. So I wanted to be the one to say thank you to them for wanting to come work for us because it means a lot. So H.R., again, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to address all of our new employees that are going to make a difference to our kids. Next slide. And then Chief, I had to go and thank you for allowing me to speak to the campus security officers, because when we talk about how our suspension rates and our expulsion rates have decreased from one year to the next, how our citations continue to decrease, it starts with our campus security guards. So I wanted to personally go up there and thank them because their contribution, they needed to understand that their impact every day in terms of building relationships, talking to our students, getting reconnaissance so that we can deal with issues before they escalate something big, they are having a big part to our key performance indicators. So Chief, thank you for letting me go up there and telling them thank you firsthand, because sometimes they don't get to hear that straight from the superintendent's voice. So I thought it was important and I wanted them to know that we see them, we hear them, we value them, and we love what they're doing with our kids. So appreciate the time, Chief. Thank you very much. Next slide. And the same thing. Last year, if you remember, I challenged all of our high school and middle school principals in our P.E. department to really start to put together a P.E. program where students were not allowed to opt out. The kids would be proud to put on their gym clothes, to actually not opt out, but actually be in movement, learn to stretch, learn about healthy living. And as I visited schools last year, every single school that I visited last year, high school or middle school, when I, first thing I do is I walk out to the P.E. because I wanted to see what was going on. And they had activities, it was organized, students are engaged, and even the kids that maybe sometimes may have forgotten their gym clothes, they were not allowed to opt out. They were in there being active and healthy living. So I want, I asked Scott Smith, who's the program specialist, if I could come and just tell the P.E. teachers firsthand, thank you. Again, I see them, I hear them, I value them, I love them, and I appreciated them stepping up to the plate because I told them, I want our P.E. programs to be the best in the state. And man, they're working hard to get there. So P.E. teachers, appreciate you and looking forward and seeing what additional level you're adding this year. So next slide. And again, I think we have the best adult education program in the state of California, and I don't shy away from that. So here's another example of why. We had another group of certified nurses assistants completing the program just last week. We went to the graduation, and it was my opportunity to say to them, don't stop here. Don't stop here. Now we get into the L.V.N. program. Then we transition to the R.N. program. And not only that, now we go into medical school. Think big. And so I just want to thank the administrative team, the teachers there. Dr. Rodriguez, I know that's under your supervision, so great job with adult education. Next slide. And I want to congratulate once again San Andreas High School today. As we know and as we heard today, they have been earning a lot of recognitions. Most recently, they earned the continuation model program. But we found out this week that they also won the America's healthiest schools. And in order to win that recognition, you had to meet and exceed the expectations of those three categories there. So I just want to thank Principal Dory Stratton, Vice Principal Bridget Rera, and all of the staff there, because they are making great things happen over at San Andreas. So congratulations on your most recent recognition. Next slide. And then a little shout out to Assistant Chief Stephen Donahue, who is currently in the process of completing the FBI National Academy. So we're very proud of Steve that he was able to get in and that he's going to be completing that. As soon as he completes the program, he will be joining Chief Paulino and Sergeant Raya as completers of the FBI Academy, which is making our staff that much better, that much more capacity in terms of their leadership and their ability to interact with our community. So Assistant Chief Donahue, congratulations, and we look forward to seeing you when you come back and recognizing and celebrating his completion. So Chief, thank you for continuing to motivate our folks to continue to learn and aspire in their career. Next slide. And yeah, we had a great first day of school, as Board Member Alexander said, full of smiles, full of robots, full of, you know, Supermans and different cartoon characters. But I too just want to thank all of our staff across the district who made that first day special. You'll see the picture that I have there with that young lady at Brown. She's a kindergarten student. And so I asked her, you think you can be superintendent someday? And she goes, I think so, you know? And so I told her, I said, it happens. It happens. So it was a really neat experience to be able to greet a brand-new kindergarten into our district. But thank you, everybody. Thank you, board, for just making the first week possible. And I do want to piggyback on what one of our student board members said, our custodians, our MNO, our groundkeepers, our welders, our A.C. folks, they really helped put that first day together. So thank you to everybody in the organization. Next slide. And just last but not least, I just want to welcome and congratulate Dr. Doisan on joining what I think is an excellent cabinet. I think her skill set, her personality, her professionalism, and her knowledge of this community is really going to help us continue to move forward and making this district shine. So Dr. Doisan, it was a pleasure to meet you today, a pleasure to meet your family, and we look forward to some great things ahead. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And before I do move on, I forgot.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And before I do move on, I forgot as well, I just wanted to give a shout out to our DLEC president, Elizabeth Romero, who was out here earlier on, in the audience, just coming to listen in, support. I'm very, I was very glad and very pleased to see her here. And then also, just to, didn't, I didn't want it to slip my mind, Mr. Tillman, earlier when you said regarding the policy, were you making a recommendation for us to bring that policy back so that I?
Yes. I would like for us to agenda the discussion again, that for high schools, they cannot be named after a person.
So we'll send it to the subcommittee policy to kind of work on it, reword it, and then bring it back?
I know I saw the past, it existed somewhere in the past, so maybe you can find it, search.
Either, either previous policies or even check the bylaws. We'll do that. So do we have consensus for that?
Yes. And even if there isn't, let's just say that we can't find it, we still, if that's what your direction is to look at having that language included, then we would look at doing that.
Thank you.
We'll send that to the subcommittee, subcommittee policy.
President Savaos, just for clarification, what is the direction, the staff again?
So for Ms. Cunningham, we're going to meet as a subcommittee, policy subcommittee, to look at that naming policy.
Include, you only can name a high school, you cannot name a high school after a person.
Or add language. Okay, thank you.
And the subcommittee will discuss that and add the language, and then we'll bring it back.
Thank you.
Awesome. 12.0 summary of board members' requests with 12.1 review of requests.
Good evening, board. This evening, I have just three requests. The first is from Ms. Alexander, and she requested that the district provide a list of daycare options to be made available to parents in cases of emergency like today. Second request is from Mr. Tillman. He requested that the district look at placing backup generators capable of providing lights and air conditioning at the school sites that were affected by today's power outage. And then lastly, the request from Mr. Tillman to agendize the discussion to bring back the naming policy to exclude high schools from being named after a person. And consensus was given. And that is all.
Awesome. 13.0, meaning adjournment, 13.1 in memoriam. The board would like to recognize and close the board meeting with a moment of silence in memory of Desiree Barrientos, a recreational aide at Kendall Elementary School who passed away on July 4, 2025. Desiree joined the district in November 3, November 3, 2022, serving as a parent volunteer until January 2025, when she transitioned to a permanent recreational aide at Kendall Harmon. Desiree was not just a colleague, she was also a devoted parent at Kendall. Her spirit was one of selflessness and service, and she made a lasting impact on the students, staff, and the school community. She touched the hearts of so many with her compassion, her laugh, and her steady presence. Though she may be gone, her spirit remains ever-present. Desiree will always be part of the Kendall Harmon family, and her legacy of kindness will continue to shine through all of us. Our thoughts and condolences are with Desiree's family, her friends, and coworkers. All right, 13.2, adjournment of the meeting. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Mr. Santos. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.